The time has come for our Monday, June 4th, 2018, regular council meeting. Roll call, please.
Alderman Villalobos.
Present.
Alderman Newsome.
Present.
Alderman Tempest.
Present.
Alderman May.
Present.
Alderman Velco. Alderman Taylor.
Present.
Alderman Bolton.
Present.
Alderman Seager.
Present.
Alderman Mosio.
Present.
Mayor Cunningham.
Present. To lead us in the pledge, I'm going to ask Ms. Mary Blair, right after invocation by Pastor Fred Overton for Waukegan Community Church located at 1016 Grand Avenue, Waukegan, Illinois. So all, please all stand. Pastor Overton, join us. Let us pray together. Oh Lord, I thank you, God, for the privilege and the honor to pray for the Waukegan City Council meeting. May God bless the city of Waukegan. Not only Waukegan, but may God bless America. America needs a blessing. It is impossible, it's not impossible for God to bless America, but it's very difficult since America has removed Him out of our school system, out of our government, out of our community, and out of our lives. I am so glad that the City Council has included prayer, desiring God's presence to be here, to guide our decision, to orchestrate our affair. What is the requirement for God to bless a nation, bless a city, or bless a state? Malachi 6:8 said, "But to do justice, to love kindness, and to walk humbly with our God." Not just to think about justice, but to do it. Not to consider kindness, but to love kindness. Not to talk about God, but to humbly walk with Him. We pray that you would bless these proceedings. Give us wisdom, give us knowledge, give us insight, may, give us righteousness, God, because it is righteousness that you bless. And so, God, we thank you for your presence. We thank you for being here. We pray for our mayor. We pray you would give him wisdom to lead this city. We thank you. In Jesus' name, amen.
Amen. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Mayor's comments. Thanks, everyone, for coming tonight. I want to start by thanking all of our veterans. I know many of the Alderman residents joined us last week in order to honor the sacrifices of our military at Military Appreciation Day and at the Waukegan Memorial Parade. Thank you again. And as always, let's make sure we continue to support our veterans and their families, not just on national holidays, but every day. You may have noticed, the grass has grown. Code enforcement has been out and will continue to be in the wards, ensuring properties are being maintained. As a reminder, our ordinance has been updated and grass cannot be in excess of eight inches. Thank you. Water billing. In January, City Council updated our ordinance for water billing, changing it from quarterly to monthly. I'm going to repeat that. Changing the water billing process from quarterly to monthly. Residents and businesses should begin receiving your monthly water bills in the next few days. We recommend signing up for automatic bank payments to ensure you avoid late fees. For any questions, please contact our water department and they'll be happy to help you. That number, that contact number is 847-360-0535. Beach maintenance. I am very happy to report that Colonel Reasoner from the Army Courts of Engineers found time in his schedule to meet with me and senior staff a few weeks ago. With his cooperation, we were able to resolve a long-running issue involving beach management. Due to financial pressures during the recession, routine beach maintenance was sidelined. Individually, some ponds developed on the south beach. Those ponds attracted flocks of seagulls and created a health hazard. When public work filled in those ponds, some complaints were filed with the Corps of Engineers claiming some violations of federal law. Our staff acted to protect public health and prevent beach closures, but the complaints needed to be resolved. With the Colonel's assistance, we have worked out a great agreement where we will dedicate 12 acres of sandy dunes on the north beach for conservation purposes and receive a permit to fill and maintain the south beach. This will ensure the swimming beach stays open and will make the dunes an area, an even greater destination spot for bird watchers and natural enthusiasts. Future improvements in the form of handicap ramps, boat walks, and varying platforms will come over the next few years. This is, this is very exciting news for all of our residents and the city of Waukegan as a whole. June is Pride Month. I took this opportunity to acknowledge our LGBTQ community and let's celebrate with them. Summer school. Congratulations to all of our senior graduates who graduated throughout, throughout Waukegan. Much success on your, on your future endeavors. That being said, with school being out, I want to remind everyone to watch your speed during the day around our parks and throughout Waukegan. Upcoming events. Three events kicked off this past Friday and Saturday that will run through the end of August. Free concerts at the Waukegan Public Library will be every Friday at noon through August. Free yoga with Marlene and free Tai Chi with Master Gary Cook will be every Saturday morning at Steiner Pavilion. Both are open to all levels. Harbor's Edge. Harbor's Edge is open for the season with concerts on most Friday, Saturday, and Sunday nights through the end of the summer. Genesee Theater has a new twist in its film series this summer. Movies, Music and Meals. First movie is the musical Chicago on Thursday, June 14th with a meal catered by Papa Marcos. Juneteenth will be Saturday. Juneteenth celebration will be Saturday, June 16th at Bourne Park. Art Walk is also Saturday, June 16th, and downtown arts entertainment district will feature a soccer theme. Waukegan Band. The Waukegan Band starts its 83rd season of free concerts on Tuesday, June 12th at 7:30 PM at Steiner Pavilion, bringing along chair and enjoy music under the stars. For further information about these events and see all other upcoming events, check out the city's website, waukeganil.gov, and explore Waukegan. I'm pleased to announce that the city of Waukegan is going to be partnering with Lake County Coalition for the Homeless this summer in order to assess homelessness in Waukegan. We really appreciate their help in finding the best possible long-term solutions for people struggling with homelessness and the condition that lead, that lead to it. At this time, I'd like to invite the Coalition members to come up and give us some briefing on exactly what things are going to be doing. But before that, Alderman May, thank you very much for suggesting that we reach out. We've done that. I really appreciate that. Yes, ma'am.
Hi. My name is Matt Tabor with the Lake County Coalition for the Homeless. Jim Benzner is also in the organization. And we are a group of over 25 agencies, individuals, and folks that are working together to work to meet the needs of the homeless families throughout Lake County. We continually look into ways that we can better serve the constituents and also the community. The ultimate solution, of course, is to have adequate, affordable housing and the resources necessary so folks can get out of the trap of being in unstable housing. We met with the mayor last, last week and talked about some of the issues that we might be able to work together on, and we are pleased to be, enter into that partnership to look at the long-term, midterm, and short-term goals that we can work on together as they impact the homeless and also the community. Specifically, what we'd like to start with is looking at, there have been some issues, as you are aware, between the Pads Center and the community and some concerns that they have. We think the best way to start with that is to understand the issue as well as we can and to get all sides of it. So we're going to begin by having some committee meetings, sort of fact-finding. So we already have scheduled meetings with city services. We'll be inviting community members to come in and express their concerns, and we will actually talk to Pads. And we hope that we can come together with, with the city, with Pads, and with Coalition to find solutions that will work to reach a benefit to everyone, the homeless clients as well as the community. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Question. How can I get involved? Can you contact me or something? Like, I'd like to participate in this.
You know, I think what we'd like to do is maybe go through Larissa.
Okay.
And she can let you know when the meetings are going to be held, if you're interested in being at those, and as we move forward into looking at what solutions might be.
Okay, wonderful.
So glad to have you. Glad to have everybody that can be of assistance with that.
Thank you.
Yeah, Larissa will be coordinating those meetings, so if any Alderman chooses to be a part of this, let us know. We'll include Joanne on the times and dates and everything. Thank you. Thank you very much.
We don't accept from the audience at this one, right?
No.
Raise your hands, public council.
No, yeah.
She wanted to know who Larissa is. She's the director.
Larissa, stand up, please. Hey, you might have come out. No, just kidding. All right. Lastly, when I became mayor, I set a goal for Waukegan, progress in unity. I'm proud of the progress that Waukegan is undergoing to ensure that we get quality infrastructure, transparent government, and excellent service. We will see that progress tonight and, we'll see that progress tonight in selecting a consultant to update our 30-year-old comprehensive plan. We've already seen some through our first capital improvement plan and the funding that has been approved for that. Achieving this progress has not been easy, though. I too must remember to balance progress with our need of unity. I am passionate about what opportunities these investments will bring to our community, as I am sure that all of the Alderman are as well. So, as I communicated last meeting, I want to again extend my sincere apology to Alderman and Taylor for interrupting. Passion should not prevent us from hearing your opinion, all of our opinions, even though in disagreement. I look forward to continue to work with all of the Alderman, city staff, residents and business owners of Waukegan, and visitors to invest in our beautiful community. Thank you.
Mayor, can I just say, I appreciate that so much, and I want everybody to know, no matter what differences you ever see, everybody up here works for this city, and, you know, the mayor works very hard in the community, as the rest of us do. And so, don't ever think that we're not unified. We may differ on different parts, but honestly, we, we all care about the city. But thank you, Mayor. Thank you.
All right. Motion by Alderman Taylor, second by Alderman Bolton, to approve regular meeting minutes from May 21st, 2018. Are there any questions? All the favor?
Aye.
All right. Audience time.
All right. First up, you have three minutes. Mary Stickles.
Hi. I'm here to introduce our, thank you, short people. I'm here to, I was here to, invited to introduce our new trustee, Gilberto Colan, but he is not here.
He's here.
He's here.
Well, I agree when I came in. Come on, Gilberto.
Young man.
We were all looking for you. Deborah put on an APB on you. Okay. This is Gilberto, Gilberto Colan. He is our new trustee, was recently appointed by the mayor. And I also have the pleasure of introducing John Gaskell. He is our new assistant director and going to be the right arm to Selena. She is not here, that's why I'm doing the introduction. She's on the meeting. Any questions?
Well, Eritu, you're going to be down the list, but we do, I would like to say, welcome to the city of Waukegan. You have, you are part of a presidential award-winning library, so the expectations are very high. But I look forward to working with you and seeing the ideas with you and Selena are going to be making to make our community one of the best communities on the face of the earth. Congratulations, welcome to our community. Anything on any Alderman? Thank you, Mayor.
Lynn Florian.
Thank you. For those of you who don't know me, I'm Lynn Florian. I'm a lifetime citizen of Waukegan. I was born and raised here. I attended the last city council meeting a few weeks ago, and I'm very glad to hear the mayor start out by apologizing. I thought that although your passion is extremely appreciated, civility, I think, is an important thing for you all to convey to the Saudis and to the citizens of Waukegan. So I commend you for apologizing and especially for doing it in public like that. So I think that was very good. I wanted to address a couple of the other things that happened at that meeting. Someone stood up and spoke about the increases in our taxes, and while I'm not one who likes to pay more taxes, trust me, I think we have to understand how our tax bill works. If you go to the county website, they have a nice little pie chart here of where your taxes actually go. 69% of your taxes go to the schools. Only 9% of your taxes go to the city of Waukegan. So if your tax bill goes up $274.88, as mine did this last year, all of that money does not go to Waukegan. So I think you need to be careful when you accuse people, especially saying someone should be arrested for something that they've said. I think you need to make sure that you're speaking the real truth about what's going on, because that, all of that money may not have been due to Waukegan raising your taxes. There's other things that it goes for. And while I'm speaking about raising taxes, I'd like to, and I know this isn't a give-and-take session, but I'd like to know if the council can look at other ways of raising money. I'm grateful that we're doing this. Coming down Washington Street today, I thought my car was going to shake apart. My cousin comes here from Canada, and he says we have worse roads here that are paved than they have gravel roads in Canada. So I'd like for him to be able to come to Waukegan and say the roads are drivable. So I'm looking forward to that. I think it's a necessary thing, but I'd like to see us try to, I don't know, use an enterprise zone, do something where we can raise money besides just always going to the citizens with taxes. Thank you for listening.
Thank you. Brother Blanks.
Brother Blanks, Black Advocition Movement for the Mind. First and foremost, BAN will be offering free tutoring for high school and junior high at our location at 801 Calister, free summer tutoring in math and English. So if anyone, students are interested, they can contact us at 773-510-1713 if they're Also, I want to extend my appreciation to the city and public works. We had put in a request for the converting of Oak Street between McKinley and, between McKinley and Liberty, in the best interest of the children right there at Bedros and Park. Memorial Day, I see where it was pretty effective, because with parking on both sides of the streets, it naturally slows down the traffic, as well as parents are able to put their children in the car on the park side of the street opposed to crossing the street. So, big appreciation for that. Also, I want to extend my appreciation to Alderman Bolton, as well as yourself, Mayor, for stopping by the center, just kind of coming through. And also, another note, as I continue to address the issue of mob action, you know, as we know another round of our children, our students would hit with mob action. I'm addressing that, and not really talking about the issue that happened outside of the school, but I'm definitely interested in knowing. And Mayor, I think not only, even though you came by the center, not only would the public appreciate hearing it from you, but I think they definitely deserve to hear from you, what do you propose, what is your proposal, idea on solutions with this? Because we can't mob action way out of this situation. This is not going to, this, I mean, we not, this is not going to work. We talked about that. So, but I do think, as you being the chief executive officer here, we've heard from some of the Aldermans, but definitely to hear your voice on this matter, in the matter of solutions, what are your thoughts? Because we got to have some solutions, because too many of our students can't continue to go in this process if you're looking to work with the citizens and you're looking to work with different organizations and businesses. It is difficult for me to work with the city over our students being hit with mob action charges, and there is no solutions here. So, you know, I say that in not only the best interest of trying to forge a relationship, a good relationship with the city, but definitely in the best interest of making sure our children are criminalized, but we have some effective solutions. Obviously, mob action don't work, because if so, we wouldn't have had to have this happen again. Thank you.
Thank you. Alonso Jenkins.
Good evening, Mayor, City Council, residents, and members of the audience. My name is Alonso Jenkins. I really debated with myself on speaker tonight on this issue, because I know increases on taxes and bonds are a sensitive issue right now, but here I stand, nervous and all. I want to start off by commending and applauding the mayor and the entire city council on passing the tax increase for the safety of Waukegan. Let me explain what I mean when I say safety of Waukegan. As many of you know, I've been a City of Waukegan Public Works employee for 17 years, and within those 17 years, I witnessed behind the scenes of this city falling apart. As a previous street stripper for the downtown area for 10 years, I could appreciate the mayor being honest with the public and residents when he said he's not scared to admit the city is crumbling, because it really is. Our infrastructures, our city buildings, our city vehicles, our bridges, that we all paid with our tax dollars, are all crumbling. Again, I say, I understand residents frustrations and being upset, but I would rather have residents upset at a tax increase because the city is fixing these issues, rather than something terrible happened, then the city has to pay lawsuits, then we're scrambling to pay for lawsuits on top of having to be forced to pay to fix the issue. Mayor, as a city employee, as a city resident, as a person that has invested 17 years so far working for the city, born and raised in the city of Waukegan, I want to thank you for having a perspective eye for the city. You have made provisions for our department that we may be able to properly and effectively serve the residents of Waukegan, and for that, I thank you. My mentor once told me, it takes a good leader to make hard decisions. For years, it's been hard to look at Waukegan as the city of progress, when so many places have been dry and desolate. But you have given us a plan, a vision for the next years to come, and for that, I thank you and the Alderman for putting the city of Waukegan back in progress and making plans to make Waukegan, once again, attractive for people and business to move. Lastly, I would like to thank the residents of Waukegan for being patient through these rough years, and I just want to keep encouraging us to stay behind and play behind this administration and city council as they move for our city forward. I look forward to us being Waukegan together. Thank you.
Thank you. Margaret Carrasco.
Good evening. They say that a picture speaks a thousand words. I'm here tonight to prove that. Last month, several Latino organizations were invited to a meeting. In that meeting, Mr. Shai went into great extent telling us on and on how he is the only person that knows what's good for Waukegan. Not Waukegan residents, him, who resides out of Waukegan, and how great and fabulous he is, and that never, ever will Waukegan's lakefront ever be any success. And if that was bad enough, we had to sit through, listen to that, but what really upset us was his way that he expressed, he was very demeaning, very arrogant, very insulting, and very disrespectful to Waukegan residents, and especially to the mayor. So with that being said, I just want to share something of the reality, what it really is, okay? This first picture is an event this past weekend of Mr. Shai's event. I think there's like the one, no one there, the next one, there's like four people. The next event, I mean, the next picture is of an event this weekend, same weekend, down at the beach, where it was packed, where we had hundreds of families come out, where Waukegan residents put it together. So I beg to differ, and as a Waukegan resident, I don't think we should have to tolerate people coming from other communities insulting us and telling us that we don't know how to do it. We just showed you that we do. Thank you.
Thank you. Ralph Peterson, Jr.
Yeah, I heard the young brother who spoke before Mrs. Carrasco. You've made statements about plans and visions, and truthfully, I've heard no plans myself. Maybe I missed a couple of meetings or whatever it is that take place. What I've noticed is an increase in taxes and more debt. In fact, I was going to speak on that. The council meetings have changed drastically. You know, I don't even really hear, like I say, of any directions or any plans or anything. The lakefront hasn't, I've heard no mention of that up here for some time. So I, you know, I'm just a little confused when you say plans and vision. I miss that, okay? I kind of lay with me speaking tonight as first-year reality, reality check to you, Mayor. I'd like to start off with saying, everybody showed excitement about our city's first black mayor, especially the black community. Mayor, you made many promises in the black community, too many to mention, and truth is, as I look you in your eye, you have not kept not a one. Again, I say, many, many were excited about our first black mayor, and again, you made many promises, especially in the white community, who are the majority of home, in homeownership. And yet, you've raised taxes in every way possible and put us into, put the city even into more debt, which will raise taxes again. You've also made many promises in the Hispanic. You've also made many promises in the Hispanic, in the Hispanic community, again, have not kept any of them. To be truthful, your performance as a mayor is equivalent to your performance as Alderman. And if anyone think I exaggerate, check his record and see what achievements are on him. Now, I ask you, Mayor, to keep in mind, you only won the seat by a mere two hundred ninety votes. I ask you honestly, as I look at you, if an election was held tomorrow, do you really think you stand a chance? I don't think so, brother. And I started out with what I was gonna end with because of the things came out of the brother's mouth, so I'll touch on that again. As I come here to these meetings, I hear no plans, no directions. We don't even speak of the lakefront or what growth, what direction we going into, and, and I, I just don't get it. I, I really don't, you know, we really thought you were gonna, it's the same, it's worse than what it was. And as for the apology to Alderman Taylor, I say-
Thank you, Mr. Peterson.
-you did what pimps do.
Thank you.
You go off on women, and then you apologize.
Thank you, Mr. Peterson, thank you. Mayor, they can boot's audience time.
Resolutions for proclamation, presentation, appointments. Motion, motion by Alderman May, second by Alderman Taylor, to present Resolution eighteen dash R dash sixty-one, resolution recognizing the twenty eighteen Northern Illinois Air Show. Madam Clerk?
Resolution eighteen R sixty-one, twenty eighteen Northern Illinois Air Show, whereas the Northern Illinois Air Show will take place on Saturday, September eighth, twenty eighteen, and whereas this event will require temporary closure of Green Bay Road from York House to Wattsworth Road from two to five P.M. in order to accommodate certain aircraft that will be the featured at the event, and whereas, the state of Illinois requires that the City of Waukegan and the Northern Illinois Air Show will assume the responsibility and liability involved in the closing of Green Bay Road for this purpose. And now therefore be it resolved that the City of Waukegan will be responsible for the direction, protection, and regulation of traffic during the, the time this temporary detour is in place, and all liabilities for damages by the closure of this section of Green Bay Road, and that all weather detours will be maintained conspicuously marked and judiciously police patrolled for the benefit of traffic deviated from the roadway due to this closure. Be it further resolved that a suitably embossed copy of this resolution signed by the mayor and the city clerk be sent to the permitting office of the Illinois Department of Transportation in order to give the authorization for this closure dated this fourth day of June, twenty eighteen.
All right. Now, that's the resolution, there's a motion, the second on the floor. Any questions to the motion? Roll call, please.
Alderman Villalobos.
Aye.
Alderman Newsom.
Aye.
Alderman Tempest.
Aye.
Alderman May.
Aye.
Alderman Taylor.
Aye.
Alderman Bolton.
Aye.
Alderman Seager.
Aye.
Alderman Mosio.
Aye.
Motion's passed and carried. Do we have anyone here tonight, David, to, we're gonna present, we have someone?
We'll just send that one by.
Okay.
The next one, I'll be here.
All right. All right. Motion by Alderman Tempest, second by Alderman Mosio, uh, to a large proclamation declaring June sixteenth Waukegan Soccer Day. Are there any questions to the motion? Roll call, please.
Alderman Villalobos.
Aye.
Alderman Newsom.
Aye.
Alderman Tempest.
Aye.
Alderman May.
Aye.
Alderman Taylor.
Aye.
Alderman Bolton.
Aye.
Alderman Seager.
Aye.
Alderman Mosio.
Aye.
Motion's passed and carried. David?
Did you want to read that one?
Uh, oh, I'm sorry, the proclamation?
I will take a picture.
All right.
Proclamation, Waukegan Soccer Day, June sixteenth, twenty eighteen, whereas soccer is known in many countries as football or football, and is played by more than two hundred and fifty million players worldwide in over two hundred countries, making it the world's most popular sport. And whereas the sport of soccer was officially created in England more than a hundred fifty years ago, when several clubs formed the Football Association, however, records trace the history of soccer back more than two thousand years ago to ancient China, Greece, Rome, and parts of Central America. And whereas the reverence and love of the beautiful game is celebrated on the world stage when the twenty eighteen FIFA World Cup begins on Thursday, June fourteenth, in Russia to kick off the biggest sporting competition in the world as thirty-two national soccer teams square off for the world title. And whereas Waukegan has a long history of embracing the sport of soccer through our multicultural and melting pot heritage, and now therefore be it resolved that Mayor Cunningham and members of the City Council of Waukegan, Illinois do hereby proclaim June sixteenth, twenty eighteen, to be Waukegan Soccer Day, and encourage the residents of Waukegan and beyond, and all Waukegan soccer programs to show their love and support for the game by intending soccer walk on Saturday, June sixteenth, during the monthly art walk in downtown Waukegan from five to ten P.M., and participate by wearing their favorite team jersey and enjoying the various soccer-related activities, including posing for a photo with a replica of the most important soccer trophy in the world, adopted this fourth day of June, twenty eighteen.
All right. Come on up. Alderman, you guys are gonna be a part of this picture too, because we have a, David, where are you at?
We go stand up here.
So somehow, we managed to get.
Oh.
We got the World Cup. We got the World Cup right here.
We can talk afterwards, thank you.
Just briefly, I want to thank, uh, Mayor Cunningham and City Council for, uh, presenting, uh, this fantastic award to us. Uh, we're heart of the city, we're a youth organization here in, uh, City here of Waukegan, and we're specializing not only just in, uh, providing opportunities for our kids to play soccer at an affordable rate, but to build our kids from a skill set on the field as well in the classroom, and provide opportunities for our kids to, uh, get secondary education, whether that be in college or vocational. Uh, we've decided to use soccer as that vehicle, because we know that our community is big into soccer, and we want to make sure that all of our kids have the same opportunities as kids from other communities. Dean Smith here, as our director of operations, and Julio Serrano here is our director of coaching, have done a great job recruiting our kids, working with the high schools, um, and the local, uh, agencies and talent to assure that our kids have these opportunities, so that way we can show that we have successful programs in our community and successful kids for our future. Anything you want to say? Bye.
Uh, I want to thank you again, Mayor, and City Council for presenting this to us. Uh, June sixteen soccer walk, we'll be shutting down, um, Genesee from Clayton to, um, Grant. We'll have life-size foosball out there, so I expect to see everybody out there with their shoes on and their favorite shirts, um, and participating in what should be a great, great event, so thank you all.
Thank you.
Thank you.
If you, if you need a ring or-
We, we saw your phone.
Yeah.
Don't worry about the phone.
That was good. All right. Motion by Alderman Bolton, second by Alderman Seager, correction, uh, a motion by Alderman Villalobos, second by Alderman Bolton, uh, to adopt as presented Resolution eighteen dash R dash sixty-two, come as you are filming on the Amstads. Any questions to the motion? Roll call, please.
Alderman Villalobos.
Aye.
Alderman Newsom.
Aye.
Alderman Tempest.
Aye.
Alderman May.
Aye.
Alderman Taylor.
Aye.
Alderman Bolton.
Aye.
Alderman Seager.
Aye.
Motion's passed and carried. Motion by Alderman Newsom, second by Alderman Bolton, uh, to adopt as presented Resolution eighteen dash R dash sixty-three honoring the life of Pastor Henry L. Woods Senior from Christian Valley Missionary Baptist Church. Any questions to the motion? Roll call, please.
Alderman Villalobos.
Aye.
Alderman Newsom.
Aye.
Alderman Tempest.
Aye.
Alderman May.
Aye.
Alderman Taylor.
Aye.
Alderman Bolton.
Aye.
Alderman Seager.
Aye.
Alderman Mosio.
Aye.
Uh, no, no reports of communication, judiciary committee?
Well, I just, a quick note about, uh, Henry Woods Senior. Um, I had a son, I hadn't heard that name in a twenty-some-odd years. I heard it, and I had coached his son, um, in the early nineties in basketball, and just a, obviously, just a wonderful, wonderful kid, one of my favorite kids I ever coached, and obviously got it from his father. I just want to put that out there, thank you.
Yes, and I, I did get a note here, for those who want to send their condolences out to the young man, um, and his, the young man's family, who unfortunately drowned yesterday at, at our beach, uh, at the beach there, and if anything I can say, when you, when you're out there on that pier, you have to be careful. You simply have to be careful and be cautious. I mean, those dangerous waters, um, uh, so we just want to send our condolences out to that young man and his family. Um, now, um, Alderman May, judiciary committee?
Thank you, Mayor. Um, the first item is a motion to approve a request of Taqueria Guadalajara LLC granting a waiver of the gaming ordinance distance requirements. I will note, the motion's to approve, but the motion, um, failed in committee. So I don't know if I should do a motion to decline? What do you, what would you suggest, Corporation Council?
Uh, yes, I would have a motion to decline.
Motion to decline, because it, it was, uh, three to zero, um, against an approval, so motion to decline a request of Taqueria Guadalajara LLC granting a waiver of the game ordinance distance requirements, and I so move.
A motion by Alderman May, uh, second by Alderman Villalobos, and this motion is to deny?
An aye is, an aye is to deny, correct? That is correct.
Okay. Roll call, please.
Alderman Villalobos.
Aye.
Alderman Newsom.
Aye.
Alderman Tempest.
Aye.
Alderman May.
Aye.
Alderman Taylor.
Aye.
Alderman Bolton.
Aye.
Alderman Seager.
Aye.
Alderman Mosio.
Aye.
Thank you. Next item is a motion to approve an ordinance granting assigned variance to Crystal Race St. Martin College Prep, thirty-one oh six Belvedere Road, to allow the installation of a logo wall sign, archi, which is actually an architectural element, and a bench on the west portion of the building facade in accordance with the plans presented, and we were given a, a rendering of this, um, architectural and, um, element, and it did pass judiciary unanimously, so I so move.
Motion by Alderman May, second by Alderman Mosio, any questions to the motion? Roll call, please.
Alderman Villalobos.
Aye.
Alderman Newsom.
Aye.
Alderman Tempest.
Aye.
Alderman May.
Aye.
Alderman Taylor.
Aye.
Alderman Bolton.
Aye.
Alderman Seager.
Aye.
Alderman Mosio.
Aye, this is over governance, I got, Coach, that's for you, over governance.
Motion passed, I'm sorry.
No, you're good. Okay, next item, um, this is a motion to accept the recommendation of the Comprehensive Land Use Plan Steering Committee to select the proposal submitted by Ratio Architects, thirty West Monroe Street, Suite five hundred, Chicago, Illinois, as the consultant to lead the comprehensive land use planning project for a cost not to exceed two hundred and fifty thousand over fiscal year twenty nineteen and fiscal year twenty twenty, from line item one hundred eight oh six eight two four five eight nine, and further to allow Corporation Council to negotiate the terms of the contract awarding said project to Ratio, and further to authorize the mayor and all other necessary officers of the city to execute said contract, and I so move.
Motion, okay, um, motion by Alderman May, second by Alderman Tempest, to get you on-
No, I can't.
No.
I'll second.
Second by Alderman Villalobos, uh, are there any questions to the motion?
Mayor, I'd just like to make a comment.
Alderman May.
So, this is, um, this is one of our mayor's major initiatives, and it's very much needed in our city. Our comprehensive land use plan is more than thirty years old, and this is, um, he's made no secret that this is one of his major initiatives, and we have a large steering committee, twenty-some people, community people, CMAP, IDNR, city officials, um, that have thoroughly vetted seven different proposals to take on this project, and it was narrowed down to three, and then Ratio came out ahead. This is, I know we talk a lot about plans in this city, and it makes everyone like roll their eyes a little bit and scratch their head, but this is, this is the steering document for the, um, future of our city, so I overwhelmingly support this, um, this initiative, and I just thank the mayor for taking on, um, this project, and I so move.
We have a comment by Alderman Villalobos, and then Alderman Tempest.
Um, also, I just want to make note too, um, for those of you on the audience, you might be looking at the agendas, and it says two hundred and thirty thousand. It was amended in committee to two hundred and fifty. Um, this would allow our staff to be a little bit more nimble, if needed more, uh, meetings or more allocation of resources to this, um, we decided that it'd be helpful to have that, uh, just in case, as, as a way to just airmark that money, uh, should it be needed. So, for those out there just kind of seeing, there's a discrepancy in what you're reading and what was said, uh, the amendment was to two hundred and fifty thousand. Thank you.
Alderman Tempest.
Mayor, I've seen, I've seen many of our- Answer plans, uh, be shelved, that's my, my reaction immediately. I would hope with this plan, we would move forward, not put it in the back shelf and file it somewhere, and, and move forward, yeah. And that's why I hesitated to vote for it, but with your assurance that we're gonna move forward, I will support it.
Thank you, uh, thank you, Alderman Tempest. Uh, are there any other questions? Roll call, please.
Alderman Villalobos.
Aye.
Alderman Newsom.
Aye.
Alderman Tempest.
Aye.
Alderman May.
Aye.
Alderman Taylor.
Aye.
Alderman Bolton.
Aye.
Alderman Seager.
Aye.
Alderman Mosio.
Aye.
Alderman, uh, May, before you go, I do want to thank that steering committee, and you said earlier, what an amazing group that came together, uh, all walks of life throughout the City of Waukegan, um, and I know you were part of that, but there was just some vested individuals in our community, from Mr. Vic, he was one of our originals, the original building commissioner, is that?
You're going way back.
Yeah, Mr. Vic was a part of that, and, uh-
Tom Big.
Yeah, Tom Big, Mr. Restalis was a part of that, and Lynn was a part of that, I mean, these just, you know, history-making people who've watched this community from the last thirty, thirty, forty years. Uh-oh, I'm missing somebody, Noel.
There's some folks on the audience, perhaps they can stand up.
Yeah, everybody, stand. Those who are part of the steering committee, please stand. Yes. And, and two of them that are here, they're here at every council meeting, I mean by vested, and they were tough, man, and we had some great, great selections, we all agree, but, uh, in, in their opinion, this particular, uh, company here met that Waukegan feel, is that pretty safe to say, it kind of had that Waukegan feel to it? And, and so I, 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 I'm, why I'm excited about this, but I'm more proud and happy for this steering committee. This was their project, and they owned the project, that's what kind of kicked me out, get out, we got it, Mayor, you're fine, move on, so I'm excited about, um, this, and to Alderman Tempest's point, that steering committee is not gonna allow me or the Alderman to put anything on the shelf. I can, am I right about that? She's shaking her head, yes. It, it, it's that calm demeanor, but yes, so I, I, I thank you very much, Alderman May and Noel, and the entire steering committee for your time and effort. And that, that was about four months, five months, it took out their time, hour, hour and a half at one point, thank you.
We're not finished yet.
Appreciate it.
We're not, we're not finished yet, we're gonna watch, we're gonna- We're not finished yet. We're going to watch, we're going to watch that, the plan all the way through, is the two, eighteen months it's going to take to put together. The steering committee will be there all the way.
That means get out the way. Say, get out the way. Yes, thank you. Thank you for that.
Next item, a motion to approve an ordinance clarifying the definition of licensed administrator, and I so move.
Motion by Alderman May, second by Alderman Tempest. Any questions to the motion? Roll call please.
Alderman Villalobos.
Aye.
Alderman Newsome.
Aye.
Alderman Tempest.
Aye.
Alderman May.
Aye.
Alderman Taylor.
Aye.
Alderman Bolton.
Aye.
Alderman Seager.
Aye.
Alderman Mozeo.
Aye.
Next item is a motion to approve an ordinance reducing the number of pawn broker licenses from four to three, and I so move.
Motion by Alderman May, second by Alderman Mozeo. Any questions to the motion? Roll call please.
Alderman Villalobos.
Aye.
Alderman Newsome.
Aye.
Alderman Tempest.
Aye.
Alderman May.
Aye.
Alderman Taylor.
Aye.
Alderman Bolton.
Aye.
Alderman Seager.
Aye.
Alderman Mozeo.
Aye.
Next item is a motion to approve an ordinance creating a Class F-one liquor license for Murphy Oil USA thirty-eight fifty Fountain Square Place, Waukegan, Illinois six zero zero eight five, and I so move.
Motion, motion by Alderman May, second by Alderman Taylor. Any questions to the motion? Roll call please.
Alderman Villalobos.
Aye.
Alderman Newsome. Alderman Tempest.
May.
Alderman May.
Aye.
Alderman Taylor.
Aye.
Alderman Bolton.
May.
Alderman Seager.
Aye.
Alderman Mozeo.
Aye.
Motion's passed and carried.
All right, next item is motion to approve an ordinance creating a banquet hall liquor license, Class K-one, as a subclassification of the Class K catering license, and I so move.
Motion by Alderman May, second by Alderman Seager. Any questions to the motion? Roll call please.
Alderman Villalobos.
Aye.
Alderman Newsome.
May.
Alderman Tempest.
Aye.
Alderman May.
Aye. Aye.
Aye, aye, aye.
Alderman Taylor.
Aye.
Alderman Bolton.
Aye.
Alderman Seager.
Aye.
Alderman Mozeo.
Aye.
Motion's passed and carried.
Next item is a motion to approve an ordinance creating a Class K-one banquet liquor license for Club La Bodega, seven oh one Pine Street, and I so move.
Motion by Alderman May, second by Alderman Mozeo. Any questions to the motion? Roll call please.
Alderman Villalobos.
Aye.
Alderman Newsome.
May.
Alderman Tempest.
Aye.
Alderman May.
No.
Alderman Taylor.
No.
Alderman Bolton.
May.
Alderman Seager.
Aye.
Alderman Mozeo.
Aye.
It's tied. Mayor, you cast the deciding vote.
My, my, my vote is aye. The motion's passed and carried.
Sorry, Mayor. Next item is zoning calendar number two five five two. Motion to approve a conditional use permit for a restaurant at three zero three five Oak Grove Avenue, Avenue, and I so move.
Motion by Alderman May, second by Alderman Villalobos. Any questions to the motion? Roll call please.
Alderman Villalobos.
Aye.
Alderman Newsome.
May.
Alderman Tempest.
Aye.
Alderman May.
Aye.
Alderman Taylor.
Aye.
Alderman Bolton.
May.
Alderman Seager.
Aye.
Alderman Mozeo.
Aye.
Motion's passed and carried.
The next item shouldn't be on the agenda, Mayor. We did discuss the potential for a liquor license for the conditional use permit that we just approved. And this will come up at the next Judiciary Committee meeting.
Okay, Jay's off. Insurance Committee, Alderman Taylor.
Thank you, Your Honor. A motion authorizing the proper city officials to settle police department workman's compensation claims C-six four five dash one eight dash one zero four four zero dash zero one for a total of sixteen thousand nine hundred and ninety-eight dollars and seventy-six cents, and I so move.
Motion by Alderman Taylor, second by Alderman Tempest. Any questions to the motion? Roll call please.
Alderman Villalobos.
Aye.
Alderman Newsome.
Aye.
Alderman Tempest.
Aye.
Alderman May.
Aye.
Alderman Taylor.
Aye.
Alderman Bolton.
Aye.
Alderman Seager.
Aye.
Alderman Mozeo.
Aye.
Motion's passed and carried. Labor Relations, Alderman Tempest.
Yes, I'd like to make a motion to adopt Resolution two thousand and eighteen, and Resolution authorize the mayor and select staff to travel to Atlantic, Georgia on a fat-fronted mission involving management of the Lake Behavior Hospital from June twenty-first to June twenty-second, two thousand and eighteen. Please note the cost associated with this travel is at the expense of the hospital.
Motion by Alderman Tempest, second by Alderman Newsome. Any questions to the motion? Roll call please.
Alderman Villalobos.
Aye.
Alderman Newsome.
Aye.
Alderman Tempest.
Aye.
Alderman May.
Aye.
Alderman Taylor.
Aye.
Alderman Bolton.
Aye.
Alderman Seager. Alderman Mozeo.
Aye.
Motion's passed and carried. Item B.
Motion to approve FLSA Section seven G memorandum of understanding to modify the collective bargaining agreement by and between the City of Waukegan and the Waukegan Police Beloved Labor Committee, Unit Number forty-two, for voluntary off-duty assignments during the two thousand and eighteen Ravine Festival.
I so move. Motion by Alderman Tempest, second by Alderman May. Any questions to the motion? Roll call please.
Alderman Villalobos.
Aye.
Alderman Newsome.
Aye.
Alderman Tempest.
Aye.
Alderman May.
Aye.
Alderman Taylor.
Aye.
Alderman Bolton.
Aye.
Alderman Seager.
Aye.
Alderman Mozeo.
Aye.
Motion's passed and carried. Item C.
Motion to approve a FLSA Section seven G memorandum of understanding to modify the collective bargaining agreement by and between the City of Waukegan and the Team Service Local Number seven hundred for voluntary off-duty assignments during the two thousand and eighteen Ravine Festival, and I so move.
Motion by Alderman Tempest, second by Alderman Taylor. Any questions to the motion? Roll call please.
Alderman Villalobos.
Aye.
Alderman Newsome.
Aye.
Alderman Tempest.
Aye.
Alderman May.
Aye.
Alderman Taylor.
Aye.
Alderman Bolton.
Aye.
Alderman Seager.
Aye.
Alderman Mozeo.
Aye.
Motion's passed and carried. Item D.
Motion to approve a FLSA Section seven G memorandum of understanding to modify the collective bargaining agreement by and between the City of Waukegan and the Metropolitan Alliance of Police for voluntary off-duty assignments during the two thousand and eighteen Ravine Festival, and I so move.
Motion by Alderman Tempest, second by Alderman Bolton. Are there any questions to the motion? Roll call please.
Alderman Villalobos.
Aye.
Alderman Newsome.
Aye.
Alderman Tempest.
Aye.
Alderman May.
Aye.
Alderman Taylor.
Aye.
Alderman Bolton.
Aye.
Alderman Seager.
Aye.
Alderman Mozeo.
Aye.
Motion's passed and carried. Item nine, public safety, Alderman Mozeo.
Thank you, Your Honor. Item A, motion to authorize the proper city officials to purchase for the Waukegan Fire Department a two thousand and eighteen Chevy Tahoe Patrol Package four by four through the Suburban Purchasing Cooperative Joint Purchasing Program, Contract one forty-seven, for an amount not to exceed thirty-six thousand six hundred dollars. Funds for this purchase will be charged to line of one hundred three zero one nine two six four nine three, and I so move.
Motion by Alderman Mozeo, second by Alderman Bolton. Any questions to the motion? Roll call please.
Alderman Villalobos.
Aye.
Alderman Newsome.
Aye.
Alderman Tempest.
Aye.
Alderman May.
Aye.
Alderman Taylor.
Aye.
Alderman Bolton.
Aye.
Alderman Seager.
Aye.
Alderman Mozeo.
Aye.
Item B, motion to award the NPP Gov. Joint Purchasing Contract to Lion Group Inc. for firefighter personal protective gear in amount not to exceed fifty thousand for the fiscal year ending April thirtieth, two thousand and nineteen. Funding for the line items one hundred three oh two oh two five four six nine, and one hundred three oh one nine two five four six nine. The membership number is M fifty-seven zero two two seven six for NPP Gov., and I so move.
Motion by Alderman Mozeo, second by Alderman May. Any questions to the motion? Roll call please.
Alderman Villalobos.
Aye.
Alderman Newsome.
Aye.
Alderman Tempest.
Aye.
Alderman May.
Aye.
Alderman Taylor.
Aye.
Alderman Bolton.
Aye.
Alderman Seager.
Aye.
Alderman Mozeo.
Aye.
Motion's passed and carried. Item C?
Item C, motion to adopt Resolution two zero one eight, a resolution authorizing proper city officials to enter into an agreement and any subsequent amendments between the City of Waukegan Oxcart Permit Systems LLC, South Ann, Illinois, for the collection of truck permit fees required for all overnight and over dimension, excuse me, overweight and over dimensioned truck trips in accordance with the Illinois Vehicle Code, and I so move.
Motion by Alderman Mozeo, second by Alderman Tempest. Any questions to the motion? Roll call please.
Alderman Villalobos.
Aye.
Alderman Newsome.
Aye.
Alderman Tempest.
Aye.
Alderman May.
Aye.
Alderman Taylor.
Aye.
Alderman Bolton.
Aye.
Alderman Seager.
Aye.
Alderman Mozeo.
Aye.
Motion's passed and carried. Item D.
And item D, thank you. Motion to adopt Resolution twenty eighteen, a resolution authorizing the proper city officials to enter into an amended mutual aid agreement with the Northern Illinois Police Alarm System, NIPUS, for the purpose of providing one another with mutual aid in the event of an emergency situation, and I so move.
Absolutely. Motion by Alderman Mozeo, and second by Alderman Seager. Any questions to the motion? Roll call please.
Alderman Villalobos.
Aye.
Alderman Newsome.
Aye.
Alderman Tempest.
Aye.
Alderman May.
Aye.
Alderman Taylor.
Aye.
Alderman Bolton.
Aye.
Alderman Seager.
Aye.
Alderman Mozeo.
Aye.
Motion's passed and carried. No old business, no business. Motion by Alderman Newsome, second by Alderman Bolton, to approve vendor payment dated June fourth, two thousand and eighteen, total amount of nine hundred and eighty-one thousand five hundred and thirty-two dollars and fifty-six cents. Any questions to the motion? Roll call please.
Alderman Villalobos.
Aye.
Alderman Newsome.
Aye.
Alderman Tempest.
Aye.
Alderman May.
Aye.
Alderman Taylor.
Aye.
Alderman Bolton.
Aye.
Alderman Seager.
Aye.
Alderman Mozeo.
Aye.
Motion's passed and carried. Item B, motion by Alderman Newsome, second by Alderman Seager, to approve regular payroll dated May twenty-fifth, two thousand and eighteen, in total amount of one million five hundred and thirty-three thousand twenty dollars and twenty-nine cents. Any questions to the motion? Roll call please.
Alderman Villalobos.
Aye.
Alderman Newsome.
Aye.
Alderman Tempest.
Aye.
Alderman May.
Aye.
Alderman Taylor.
Aye.
Alderman Bolton.
Aye.
Alderman Seager.
Aye.
Alderman Mozeo.
Aye.
Motion by Alderman May, second by Alderman Villalobos, to, to ratify Gilberto J. Collin appointment to the Waukegan Library Board. Get a vote to please stay again. All right. Are there any questions to the motion?
Mayor, I just want to make a comment.
Yes, Alderman May.
I, I just am really happy about this appointment. I don't, I don't know where they found him, but Gilberto, I think, graduated Waukegan High School twenty thirteen, and he went to college and graduated, and he came back, and this is exactly who we need to guide us into the future. So thank you so much.
You know, I, I'm gonna tell you, I saw him out, and I was asking him the same question, go to school, he's in college, he's in grad school right now. Said, what are you doing right now? Do you want to get in for Waukegan? Yeah. Got, I think we got a resume that same week, got him out, and here, and here is where we're at now, at that Waukegan Library, man. You're gonna make an awesome, awesome addition there. Young, young man. Part of our community.
Yep.
You are going to be the example why people come to our city when they go away, come back. Congratulations, sir. Happy for you, proud of you.
Can I add something too, please?
Alderman Villalobos.
Also, just to speak highly of Gilberto, I met him a couple of years back. I think he was a freshman maybe at that point in college. But, he's already giving back to the community, for those who aren't aware. Waukegan High School, the Brookside Campus did a career day for the sophomores, and Gilberto was one of the speakers there and spoke to probably a hundred or so sophomores, or maybe more, where they had to look at different career paths. So he was able to share his experiences, not only as a Waukegan resident and student, but also what he's moved forward to and what his plans are for the future to enlighten them, opportunities that they could have in life as well. So, already becoming a role model, so congratulations for that. Thank you.
Anyone else? Roll call please.
Alderman Villalobos.
Aye.
Alderman Newsome.
Aye.
Alderman Tempest.
Aye.
Alderman May.
Aye.
Alderman Taylor.
Aye.
Alderman Bolton.
Aye.
Alderman Seager.
Aye.
Alderman Mozeo.
Aye.
Motion's passed and carried. Congratulations. Uh-oh, picture. You got to take picture time, sorry. We gotta go ahead and shake the hands and all that. Can I ask the Alderman to join us in the picture?
Want to hold her?
Yes, Alderman, to join us in the picture. All right, here, so we'll get the city of Waukegan going over. Keep going right there. Go ahead, right there. All right, sir. I have the license. Ready?
Stuck here.
I got heels, but she was there next to me.
Congrats, Mayor. Back for you. Motion by Alderman May, second by Alderman Bolton, to approve, I think it's here, I'm sorry, to ratify Mr. Benjamin Grimes, affectionately known as Ben, Ben Grimes, appointment of Waukegan planning and zoning commission. Planting and zoning Commission. Ben, as always, sir, please stand. It's not that we don't know you, but eh, this is protocol. Are there any questions? Roll call, please.
Alderman Villalobos.
Aye.
Alderman Newsome.
Aye.
Alderman Tempest.
Aye.
Alderman May.
Aye.
Alderman Taylor.
Aye.
Alderman Bolton.
Aye.
Alderman Seager.
Aye.
Alderman Mozeo.
Of course.
All right, motion's passed and carried. Ben, come on up, and let me tell you why I'm asking. Come on up, man. I'm gonna, the reason I ask that the Alderman join me in the photo typically is just the mayor. These two committees, or these two committees is a Congress of Waukegan, so I want everybody to see, this is all of Waukegan, not just me, it's all of us. That's why I asked the Alderman some time to take pictures with me. Be right around, Ben. And this one as well. This is a very important committee here. Thank you.
Hey, Bob. Congratulations. Thank you, sir. Congratulations. Let's have, I'll do a starting, let's have you starting.
Item A, motion by Alderman Tempest, seconded by Alderman Seager, to approve an ordinance in terms of a docking and rental agreement with Michael's Corporation. Any questions to the motion?
I do have a question, Mayor.
Yes?
I'm just curious, it sounds like there's going to be two barges parked along our portion of the inner harbor.
That's true.
And have, I'm just, have we, does it have any effect on Larsa Marine International Gypsum, or we don't?
No, there's enough space there that they won't be in the way in any way, shape, or form.
Okay.
I was out there this afternoon to take a look at it myself, just to make sure of that, very, very questioned. The barge that you actually see out in the harbor is like triple wide, that would be a problem, but these are narrow, comparatively narrow barges, thirty-five, forty feet across.
Okay. And I'm trying to remember, was it a no more than two-year contract?
I believe so.
Okay.
I know that they're taking, that they're able to use the property without, or having to put any improvements in there, and they're just gonna pay us for the right to dock their boats in the inner harbor.
Okay.
So we're getting money without, there shouldn't be any impact on the citizens.
I have a comment and question.
Alderman Villalobos?
In terms of renewal, the way I read it was up to five times, they could renew for thirty-day increments, or sixty-day increments, meaning either five months to ten months max. So that's not two years.
Okay.
We had the ability to do two years if we want to, land rental, as a home world community, but this agreement is only up to the max of ten months, it reads out.
I didn't negotiate the agreement, so I didn't.
And then, I do have a question regarding the certificate of insurance. Has that been submitted yet, or is that gonna happen?
It will be submitted.
Yeah, that's part of the formal documents.
It is part of the formal, but the way this reads too, that it's an agreement from tomorrow to July 5th, and so if that company wants to get the maximum amount of time out, they need to submit this receipt tomorrow.
Yeah, we'll make sure.
Because that's also, nothing will start until that certificate's put in.
Yeah.
Nothing starts unless we get approval for the building. That I can assure you.
Right. So just want to make sure that's been noted and flagged.
Yeah, Michael's is a very large corporation, too. That's not a serious concern.
Okay, just making sure. Thank you so much.
Roll call, please.
Alderman Villalobos.
Aye.
Alderman Newsome.
Aye.
Alderman Tempest.
Aye.
Alderman May.
Aye.
Alderman Taylor.
Aye.
Alderman Bolton.
Aye.
Alderman Seager.
Aye.
Alderman Mozeo.
Aye.
All right, motion's passed and carried. Item F, motion by Alderman Villalobos, seconded by Alderman May, to adopt Resolution 18R, a resolution authorizing proper city officials to execute a settlement agreement between, a settlement agreement with the U.S. Army Corps of Engineers, and any contracts, deeds, and otherwise convey, convincing instruments facilitating compliance with the settlement agreement, and allowing for beach maintenance operations as provided for, in this associate permit. Bobby, you want to clean that up?
Sure, I'd be happy to. Lawyers speak sometimes. The fact is, with the assistance of the Colonel coming in and speaking directly with the mayor, and brought along some staff from both his, the Colonel's Corps of the People and our own internal staff, we were able to reach a resolution of this long outstanding problem about the ponding on the beach. As you know, a couple of years back, thanks to some deferred maintenance, the beach had accrued a large pond that was posing a health, a health problem, thanks mostly to seagulls and other shorebirds. The Health Department was, at that time, closing down a lot of beaches up and down Lake Michigan, and it was the Fourth of July weekend, and everybody wanted to make sure that this wasn't one of them. The fastest way to avoid that is to get the ponding out of there, so you cover over any areas where the sea, or where water would collect and attract the seagulls. And when they did that, there was a complaint filed by some citizens with the Corps of Engineers claiming that there was improper movement of sand to a point below the, what's called the meet high watermark, that is the level of Lake Michigan. While that took care of the immediate problem, and the beach was able to open, it created a long-term problem that we had to deal with in the form of an enforcement action. Ultimately, we were able, with Colonel Rising herself and with the mayor's ability to negotiate and find our way through this, we negotiated a long-term solution to this. Now, what we're gonna do as a result of this agreement, I think is a win-win for everybody, we're gonna be able to bring in some sand, and the first loads of sand have already arrived. Spread it out, and we're gonna be able to continue to maintain the beach in perpetuity, and we should do that on a regular basis and groom it and keep it properly taken care of for the future, because that's how we're gonna avoid ponding, and as long as we don't have ponding, it doesn't fall back within the Corps jurisdiction. The Corps has also given us a permit to use, to put in some handicap accessible ramps on the north end of the south beach, that's the area just south of the Breakwater, the Old Johnson Pier, I think they called it, and the, that will allow some greater access down in that area. Now, in trade-off, on the north beach, there's an area of twelve acres of dune land, which is not usable for anything anyway, in terms of construction, that will be dedicated with a conservation easement upon it, and then we'll have the opportunity to have boardwalks and some viewing stations to attract bird watchers and other nature, people that are interested in nature, and that land will be preserved forever for our children, grandchildren, whoever else comes after us after that point in time. So I think this was, was an excellent resolution on a very difficult situation that was managed originally probably about as well as you could hope to, but it's still left to technical violations of some court, some federal regulations that govern the law.
Any other questions? I want to add that Public Works did an awesome job. Is that correct term, is kind of grading, the saying? Who is Mike, is that the correct term, grading? Did an awesome job doing that, and I want to commend you and it was Dallas, and Mr. Jones, working those end movers. Awesome job. But you know what? David, you and Jay was there every step of the way, so I want to, you know, give a shout out to both Mike, Public Works, and your team, David and Jay. It's been a long time, so with you, now it's time to continue to execute the maintenance of that. So congratulations to all of you, and Alderman, you as well.
Roll call, please.
Alderman Villalobos.
Aye.
Alderman Newsome.
Aye.
Alderman Tempest.
Aye.
Alderman May.
Aye.
Alderman Taylor.
Aye.
Alderman Bolton.
Aye.
Alderman Seager.
Aye.
Alderman Mozeo.
Aye.
Motion's passed and carried. Item G, motion by Alderman Villalobos, seconded by Alderman Bolton, to approve outdoor special events. The sponsor has applied under the directive for non-city governmental use and city-owned buildings and venues. Any questions? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion's passed and carried. Item H, motion by Alderman Newsome, seconded by Alderman Tempest, to approve all block party applications. Any questions? All those in favor?
Aye.
Motion's passed and carried. Ordinance is done. Closing remark, audience time. Madam Clerk?
Alderman's time, yes. Alderman Villalobos.
I don't really have much to say today, other than just congratulate them to Gilberto Collin. I look forward to working with him. For those who aren't aware, I'm the liaison for the City of Waukegan, to the Waukegan Public Library Board. I was, I'm a former employee of the library, so it's very near and dear to my heart, and I find it very promising to have a young man like him to be part of the board, so that's really all I have to say tonight, so thank you, everyone.
Alderman Newsome.
Thank you. Came to me real quick. Okay, I just wanted to thank my code officer, Erica Taylor. She's doing an awesome job in the ward. I know the mayor spoke briefly about Tall Grass, and I've been calling her on different spots that I've seen throughout the ward, and when I contact her, she's already taken care of it, so my hat's off to her. She's doing an excellent job. Some residents did come to her to let them know that they had been cutting some of the vacant properties on their streets, so neighbors on Pine Street, New York, and Garden Place, they've been stepping up to the table and taking care of their neighborhood as well, so I want to let them know that I appreciate them and all that they're doing. I was riding around on Greenwood last week, and I saw a young gentleman at the age of eighty-three. He was out across the street from his house in the Commonwealth Edison easement, and he was using his weed whacker, so he was manicuring the grass across the street from his home. His name is Mr. Jack Tonks. So he was doing an excellent community service manicuring job on his street, and he does it all the time. He said he wants to keep his neighborhood clean, such as a few other neighbors on that street, they do the same thing. They clear out around the fire hydrants on that street, and it's just really nicely manicured in that area, so if you go up Greenwood towards Kellogg, you'll see a lot of the spots that are cleared out, that they're doing it, they're taking it upon themselves to clean it out, so I appreciate all their help. And Waukegan Community Church had their, is celebrating their twenty-eighth anniversary, I believe, this month, and they initiated a cleanup this Saturday, and we walked from Jackson West to Lewis Avenue, both sides of the street, so I wanted to just thank them for initiating street cleanup in the City of Waukegan, and the City of Waukegan also for supplying the bags and the gloves, and also Public Works for coming to pick up all the bags of garbage that we picked up. Just wanted to thank you for that, and that's all I have.
Alderman Tempest.
Pass.
Alderman May.
Thank you, I'll be brief. I just want to congratulate the administration, the mayor, and everyone that worked on this conservation easement. I know it's been the main topic of our Waukegan waterfront working group for a couple of years now, and so kudos to everyone, and I just want to give a shout out to Diane Tussack at the IDNR, who has been instrumental in guiding our, like, the future of our lakefront in matters such as this. So I'm excited that the dunes will be protected in perpetuity. There's a lot of endangered species in that area, and it really is a big asset to Waukegan Beach. And then the only other thing I want to say, Mayor, is I'm just so happy to hear that you're partnering with the Lake County Coalition for Homelessness, and I do, I do believe that we're gonna find some good solutions to, to caring for our homeless population without impacting our neighbors. So thank you. That's all I have.
You're welcome, Mayor.
Alderman Taylor.
Again, I would like to thank the mayor for partnering up with the Lake County Homeless Coalition. We definitely need to attend to some of our homelessness in the city. Also, summer has approached us pretty rapidly here, so again, I want to make sure that people educate themselves about using Lake Michigan, that you use it safely, you understand the dangers of swimming in Lake Michigan. Also, as you're using our beaches and our parks, please clean up after yourself. The litter that is left behind is not somebody else's problem, it's your problem, you've dumped it, please pick it up. Last, as we have our first block party, I want to remind residents that if you are looking at having a block party, please try and give your Alderman about three weeks' notice so that the paperwork can be submitted, and that we can make sure that if you're asking for police and fire to come, that we can put that through. Thank you.
Alderman Bolton.
I too want to thank Mike Hewitt and Public Works and all those that work with him. I constantly get calls every week about picking up mattresses and tires and TVs and so forth, and anytime I call them, they are right there, so I really, really want to also thank them. Especially last week, the code task enforcers, they came together, all the code enforcers from all nine wards came together to work in the first ward, those that are not aware of that, so they did a great, great job. That's a good place, yeah, to thank them. Also, I want to acknowledge Bam, this is true enough, he is, has free tutoring, so if you have a young person that needs assistance in math, right, and reading, make sure you take, walk by. I did come by this week and visiting me is at 801 McAllister in Waukegan. Also, I took time to visit, it's called Robetti Culinary Pathway. Those of you, they've been there for quite a while, but I got a chance to visit them today, and was aware that they have, they feed eighteen thousand, they give away eighteen thousand free meals annually. So if you want a cooking class, or you have a young person that wants to, interested in cooking, they are at 833 South Lincoln. They too also have, once they go through the training, it's a nine-week training, they find jobs for anyone that graduates from their school. Also, they offer sewing classes. They have a summer camp, you can sign up for that. Once again, that is at 833 South Lincoln. And then, of course, we have the Beacon Place. I'm telling you, the first ward is off the chain. We, we're working on it. They have community service where you can register your young person for summer camp. Thank you.
Alderman Seager.
Good evening, everyone. Just an announcement, I have a scheduled cleanup community day on the ninth, which is Saturday coming up. I'd like to thank Tony Campos for helping me put this group together. We did it last year, and this, in the same location, it'd be the southeast part of the second ward, which is Elmwood, 10th Street, 11th Street, 12th Street, 13th Street, Lions Court, parts of 14th Street, and if we can, we're gonna take it on up to Doug Deal, or maybe even as far as Grand Bay Road. But the group that volunteered, it was about twenty-five, thirty people, and I want to thank Public Works for getting equipment ready for me, and I'll be picking that up this week, Mike. I thank you. Also, I'd like to thank Tony Campos and John Church, which is located on Rock House and McCary. We're going to meet at 9:00 AM at Twin City Park, right off of Washington Park. Anybody that's interested, want to volunteer, come on down, and pizza's on me after we get this cleanup done.
After, after your work.
After. Thank you very much. Everybody have a good evening.
Alderman Mozeo.
Friday, June 29th, 6:00 to 11:00 PM, return to the Eighties Class Reunion Steiner Pavilion, DK playing the Eighties music nostalgia car display, all classes 1980 through 1989, all students, their parents, their children, even grandkids are invited, teachers from the Eighties are invited. Free event open, everyone, even if you weren't a product of District 60 during the 1980s, because everybody knows the Eighties had it going on. That, we know, that's Alderman May, myself, Mayor Cunningham, who else is 1980?
Tina.
Nineteen eighty from Waukegan, so nineteen eighty to nineteen eighty-nine.
Chief.
Had it going on, so that is gonna be an event, hopefully like none other, that's gonna be put on, so I was told to pass that along, so. With that, motion to adjourn, Mayor.
Your teachers are invited, Larry.
Yes, Coach U. Coach, you cover about ten decades.
Motion by Alderman Mozeo, seconded by Alderman May. All those in favor?